Madam Clerk, can I have you do the roll call, please?
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble.
Present.
Counselor Burley.
Present.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Warden McQueen.
Present.
Sorry. Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Clumpus sends her regrets. Counselor Kentner. Counselor Kivini.
Present.
Counselor Boddy.
Present.
Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury.
Present.
Counselor Millen.
Present.
Counselor Soever.
Present.
Counselor Bartonicki sends her regrets. Counselor Potter.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you.
Again, welcome County Council. Welcome County Council for our December 12th meeting. At this time, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest with the members around the table today? All right, if one does rise, you can declare at that time and sign the proper paperwork. At this time, we have two sets of minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor O'Leary, Counselor Burley. Any discussion on those minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? I just carry it. So then, we have -- did I capture the both minutes?
No, just A.
Okay. So then, we have a set of closed session minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Kivini? And do I have a seconder? Counselor Millen? Are there any errors or omissions in those sets of minutes? If there's any discussion, we have to go on camera, but seeing none, all in favor? I just carry it. Okay. We have a closed meeting matter. Madam CIO, so we need to go on camera?
Yes, we do, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So, Counselor Desai, Counselor Carlton? Any discussion on it? All in favor? We're going on camera. So those that are in the audience, you'll have to leave for a few minutes, please. And I'll pass it over to you, Madam CIO.
Thank you. All right, so Kevin and Randy and Michael, who need to stay, as well as --
Anybody out of the hall there?
Yes, sir.
Still coming in? Good. So, moving on to our agenda then, we have the Board of Health minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder for those minutes? Counselor Patterson, Counselor Hutchinson, is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. You don't, you're not doing your report today, sir, are you?
I can do a couple of highlights if you want.
If you wish.
Thank you, Warden McQueen. Along with the regular reports, we did have a presentation on the Smoke Free Ontario Act. And I have personally not heard of it yet, but there is a new street drug out there, and naloxone does not reverse it. So, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about it. We're investigating the feasibility of entering into the class action lawsuit that's underway against big pharmaceutical companies that were involved that produced opioids. So, that's in early stages. And in the November program report, it talks about food safety courses. And each premise that has food service will need to have a minimum of one person trained with the food safety certification. And there is no confirmed start date yet for the Ontario Senior Dental Care Program, but the health unit is preparing for it, looking into hiring a couple of staff and contacting dentists for providing services. And that's it. Thank you.
Counsel, so the motion that Counselor Patterson mentioned with regard to the class action lawsuit that's happening in British Columbia, looking for some compensation from the op, I can't say that word, opioid manufacturers. Michael had done some additional investigation into that and has communicated, I think, back to the health unit, but only very recently. Michael, do you want to just give a comment about the waiting and seeing that we're doing right now?
Yes, we've received the motion and the recommendation from the Board of Health. And we have done initial, an initial review of what has been launched in British Columbia, which is the present class action, the only one that we're aware of. Right now, that class action has the province of British Columbia as the plaintiff. And it appears that they are looking to bring the other provinces, potentially the territories, in as other potential plaintiffs. It's not clear at this point how municipal involvement would work. This is, appears to be a fairly high-level elaborate litigation strategy akin to what was done with tobacco companies some time ago. There's legislation that was brought forward in British Columbia to facilitate their class action. The legislature in Ontario just yesterday passed third reading on a companion bill here. And I believe there are probably other acts in other provinces proceeding along the same line that would support the rights of the provinces to recover against the opioid manufacturers. Before we could, I'd be in a position to bring anything substantive to county council on what we could do. We'd have to sit down and do a bit more detailed review to have a good sense of what the county's position would be.
So, all of that to say that this seems to be a developing file. And as we have more information, we'll be communicating that back through the health unit board.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anything else with regards to the health unit? All right, we have two bylaws that I don't know if anybody wishes to pull them apart. If not, I need a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Desai, second by Counselor Robinson. Is there any discussion on those two bylaws? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, good news and celebrations. I'm sure everybody has lots of great news. Who wants to go first? Counselors, whoever.
Your mic.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, on December 8th, last Sunday, Brian Saunders, the mayor of Collingwood, and I attended the Fourth Annual Toronto Ski Club Christmas Lunch. This is a lunch that they put on for the needy people in our communities. So, they get referrals from Beaver Valley Outreach in Thornbury, the Salvation Army, Big Brothers and Sisters, in Collingwood, and Goldentown Outreach in Meaford. So, they provided 150 people with turkey dinner, gifts, age-appropriate gifts for all the kids, and a grocery cart for $60 and a swag bag for the parents. And then they also had their members donate lightly-used clothing and a clothing rack, which people could pick boots and coats and things like that from. So, this is all done by the Toronto Ski Club membership. They, they, they donate and raise money for this, and they provide the transportation there by bus as well for all these people. So, it's a great community event that I wasn't even aware of in the town of Blue Mountains. This has been going on for four years now, and they do this every year, and every year it gets bigger. So, it's a great event, and it made 150 people very happy. No, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of things. On the 3rd of December, Gray County hosted a meet or visitor workshop, I guess, at the Kinplex in Flechton. Terrific event. Counselor Carlton was there. I'm trying to think, who else?
Counselor Caving.
Yes, our members from Meaford, Counselor Kenner and Counselor Caving were there as well. A really good event, and I'd like to thank our tourists and staff, I guess, for putting it on. And we learned, certainly we learned a lot about who, who are the people that visit Gray County, and not just Gray County, but various parts of Gray County, and what the differences are between people who visit, for example, the town of Blue Mountain, people who visits, who visit Gray Highlands, people who think of visiting Southgate and then re, you know, come to their senses. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, two weeks ago, I, I'd mentioned. Two, two weeks ago, I'd mentioned recycled asphalt pavement. I've got a show-and-tell cube here. It's, I can toss it over to the member opposite if he'd, if he'd like. So, if anyone wants to have a look, certainly feel free to come over and take a piece.
You may want to throw the director of transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just two things, if I may. First of all, I just wanted to announce that Councilor Columbus is doing well and should be back with the county council and municipality of Meaford Council in January. And secondly, I wanted to thank Mayor Sowever and Warden McQueen for attending our meeting in Meaford last night. The TC Energy hosted a facilitated meeting at our community center where people were turned away. There was an overcapacity crowd. And TC did answer some questions from the audience about that proposal, and it's of major concern to our residents. There will be two more opportunities for any county councillors that are interested in attending, and that would be in January the 16th and on the 23rd. Well, the same presentation that was delivered last night will be brought forward again, and there will be opportunities to speak with the subject matter experts from TC. They brought 20 experts with them last night, engineers and so on, and that will be repeated in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. And we had, from our planning staff, we also had Scott there also.
Scott, oh, I'm sorry, I can see Scott. There was so many.
Ah, there we are. Old-fashioned Christmas. If you've never been, you want to go in downtown Thornbury. It's all day, basically, starts at the library at 10:00 a.m. Mrs. Claus will be there with her workshop. There's cookie decorating. There's curling at the arena, balloon twisting, not sure really what that is, but face painting. Santa arrives at 6:00 to visit with all the kids and grown-up kids. And it's just a lot of fun. It's a great community event that's been going on for a long time. Yet, if you've never had roast chestnuts out in the cold air, it's, it's, it's quite an experience. And it's a chance to connect with all kinds of people. Sometimes you meet people you only see at old-fashioned Christmas, but it's nice to see them. So, it's just a great community event. It's a lot more fun than a parade, I will say that. And it's, it gives you a chance to see what the stores have to offer, too. So, come on to Thornbury this weekend in the Blue Mountains and enjoy.
I take it those chestnuts are on open fire?
Oh, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The Holstein Non-Motorized Parade is, Christmas Parade, is on Saturday at 1:00 in Holstein this weekend. We, we're welcoming all that want to come. There'll be a big crowd, so if you want to be parked anywhere within walking distance, get there early. All the roads around and in Holstein are paved, which apparently is a novelty to some in Gray Highlands. So, you know, you don't have to worry about walking on gravel. So, come on out, Counselor Desai, if you want to see what a good paved road is.
Thanks, Counselor Millen, and I'm planning to be there.
Yes, on that, just follow-up to your comment on roasting chestnuts on open fire. We do do that, and I'd like to tell you, we do that on a county road.
Hopefully not "on" the asphalt, though, eh?
Thank you, Warden McQueen. Just wanted to re-invite everyone. I think I mentioned it at our last county council, but Friday night, we are having Christmas in the village. We'll be unveiling the concept designs for our new community hub. And then we have the Santa Claus Parade that the Warden will be attending on Saturday morning at 10:30. So, everyone is welcome to the Village of Chatsworth on Saturday, or Friday night. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Mackey. I'm going to be running from the Chatsworth Parade to the Holstein Parade, so save me a parking spot, will you? I, the first week of my being Warden has been very busy, and working with these two lovely ladies beside me, along with Tara, has been great, great orientation. Some of the things Some of the things I've been thinking about is working with us as county council with regards to social events, bringing us together a little bit more into doing things. So, a couple of things, I've been talking with members around the table or around the horseshoe is a couple of things. I want to set up a Warden's Committee to start with, and that would include Sue Patterson, Ian Body, Lars Suever, Scott Mackey, Christine Robinson, and that will also definitely include my deputy warden and myself, not to be left out. I have a couple other task forces that I'd like to see coming together, and maybe for housing, because I know housing is something very important for us here in Gray County. And I'd like to see Mr. Ryan Millen, Odette Bernicki, Shirley Keating, Dwight Burley, Brian O'Leary, that would also include the deputy warden and myself. And also, we know that we have another big thing coming forward is climate change. No, no, we'll have to go through a notice of motion and all that stuff, but these are just some ideas for myself. On the idea on the climate change, would include John Woodbury, Tom Hutchinson, Brian Gamble, Cash Desai, and Barb Compass, along with the deputy warden and myself. So, definitely those would have to come through, probably through a notice of motion. But it's just some ideas I'm throwing out there to us as county council to work on those ideas. Idea of the Warden Committee, it's just a sounding board, has no jurisdiction as far as anything other than as myself as a warden. It's something that has been in the past. It's something that I think is very useful for myself to have that opportunity to have a sounding board and talk about social things. And I feel very, it's very important that we move forward and a social part of us getting to know each other better. I've mentioned it to the CEO about maybe the possibility of having a retreat. That's something that I think is something that forces, not forces, but encourages us to sort of maybe think outside that box, to know each other a little bit further. So, those are just a couple of ideas that I'm looking at putting together, but certainly, most definitely through the setting up a task force, would have to go through a notice of motion, and also terms of reference for that. But as we know, as I had mentioned in my address, my inaugural address, social housing, housing itself and climate change are two things that are going to be facing us. We know we want to be an opportunity to work through that. I know that we're waiting for a report to come back on the opportunities of attainable housing and what can happen there. So, anyway, just some ideas, certainly open for lots of thoughts around the table, working together, and I'll leave it at that. Is there any other good news and celebrations? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn from our regular council. Councillor Hicks, Councillor Gamble, all in favor? Let us carry it. So, one other thing I want, I forgot to mention before we get into county, our regular committee of the whole, is I would like to, whenever we take a break, is us all get together along with our senior staff and have a Christmas picture. I think it's something that I would like to see all us along the front here. We've done it before. And then, that one, I know we send out Christmas cards. I know I signed a quite a few there last week, this past week, but I think it's, in an electronic age, I see it from other municipalities, they're sending out the Christmas cheer. I think it's something that we could send out from ourselves, the county council and staff. So, whenever we take that break, we have somebody who's got the camera. Rob's away today, so whenever we take that break, I would ask that we do that. Okay, so, we'll shuffle aside, and we'll move into our committee of the whole.